Okay, at 6:38 I call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone, and if you would, we will stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just to remember, there was a sign-in outside if you'd like to sign in. And we will get started. First on the agenda, we have facilities and we will have a construction update. We'll start with the area technology center.
Jeremy?
Yes, sir.
Does he have a mic or not? Here you go, Jeremy, if you don't care, come up and you can use my mic.
All right, so we had a great walkthrough earlier with the board. I think they were pleased with the progress they've seen on the ATC building. I'll just give a quick update on both areas that we're working in and the goes for the month that we're trying to achieve. So on Area A, which is the lower area, we just poured the slab, blasted the slab today. Masons continue to build the CMU walls. And once that's complete, we will start the floor joist. We look to start the floor joist and get that first pour on the deck on 1112. And then we'll start to commence the CMU on the second floor. Then following that, the roof joist on 121. And we're looking to be under roof there on Area A on January 11th. So that's our biggest target right now is to get that thing dried in and a roof on it. Area B, which is the one that's already under roof, we got it, we'll have it dried in this week. Drywall insulation will start next week. And then most of our finishes, MEBV, still on the rough end. And also paint will start in November. So by our next board meeting, we'll see a lot of progress there. And I'm sure that the board will be happy with progress they see in the next board meeting. So if you have any questions for me, feel free to ask. But I feel like we've done a pretty good job, thorough walkthrough. So, thank you, Ms. Saylor.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the pay application number 14.
I am trying to open the attachment, and for whatever reason, it's not opening.
It downloads, but it won't.
Says "Bottle top's not supported."
Yeah.
I've got it.
I've got it.
You got it, yes. I know it's a little over $400,000.
Next one on the board.
It's a total of $443,043.55. And my recommendation is that we pay estimate number 14 for the area technology center project.
Do we have a motion?
Sorry?
I'll make that motion. Thank you, Jenny. Do we have a second?
I have a second, Jenny.
Any discussion? You're so. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the bus garage, and we will have an update. Peter?
All right, you guys, I think you're here. Here, you go get the. Build up my mask off. I think I'm okay, Jeff.
Can Jeremy pick you up?
Can you pick me up?
I want your name, it's loud.
Okay.
That's all right. Just go ahead.
So I wanted to thank everybody for making the trip up the hill to the bus garage today. A lot of progress has been made. The pay app that you're considering tonight indicates that they're about 70% done. They've gotten a lot further than that in the last couple of weeks since they turned the pay app into me. So a lot of what's left to do has to do with grading in asphalt, getting the roads in up there. It is my understanding that a lot of that is going to be taking place this week, end of this week, and into the weekend, on Friday and Saturday. So hopefully, that will come along well. And as they sort of finish tidying it up and buttoning up the building, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the bus garage project while I'm down here.
I think he pretty much answered everything that we had at the walkthrough, so it's really well.
Looks great.
So everybody knows we did a walkthrough there just a few minutes ago, so a lot of questions was answered. But thanks, Peter, for your work on that. Just so the board will know, substantial completion is October 31. So they're going to have all their inspections completed. Mr. Willis, they're going to start moving in this coming week, probably about Tuesday. So they'll start moving everything out. We'll vacate the city garage. And fuel will arrive sometime next week, or within the next two weeks. We've got to empty the tank that's at the central office, but all the fuel will be delivered. We'll be able to start using that facility November 2nd, on the Monday when we get back. At least, that's the plan.
Okay, next, we have a pay application number nine, associated direct purchase orders.
I don't know if you're able to open that or not, but if not, you all have seen it because you've been looking at it at home. The total pay app is $415,497.64. It's been reviewed by the architect and approved for payment, and it's my recommendation that we do so.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our bleacher replacement project. Consideration approval to advertise for labor bids.
We'll get a mic set up.
So the bleacher replacement project is underway. It sort of hit a snag at KDE just briefly with some of the paperwork that surrounded the state pricing contract that Toadvine was using to get the bleachers demolished and installed. And there is a small labor portion of the project that is not covered by state pricing that we're going to need to take to bid, right? This is just labor to demolish the middle school bleachers and the labor to relocate the bleachers that are in the high school to the board office building. So the docs are ready to go, but we can't go to the printer until you guys approve, you know, advertising for this bid. And that is, the hope is that we will have the bid opening in early November, and the project will be, you know, on course for the installation of the bleachers later on in the winter. So I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about that. It just simply, the folks in Frankfurt wanted to see this done with the right paperwork, and they had their ideas. And Toadvine is working with us to make sure this happens. So we have our specifications and our drawings done, and they're ready to go to the printer if you all would like to advertise for this portion of the project.
But the bleacher project won't be completed until next fall season. It won't be ready for this fall season.
It'll be ready sometime in February.
Yeah, we are indicating in our drawings that the work would be completed in February
And I'll just say, guys, the issue is with KDE, and they tried to work this out several different things, but it just wasn't one of those things that was worth dying on the hill for. So we just decided to go ahead and pull it out. We've got bigger fish to fry with the high school renovation. So there's no need to cause a big stink on this one in order to go ahead and get it through. It's the quickest path. We could have probably fussed a little bit more if we wanted to, but I just felt like at this point in time, they held it up so long, it's going to delay the installation because you really can't blame the company for not going ahead and starting a manufacturer because, you know, without the ability to install it and without approval from KDE, they'd be taking on the obligation. So Peter, I just need you to help us in terms of what exactly the advertisement, if you'll send that back to me in the morning where we can get it advertised and ready for the paper. And I think we've got to advertise it, what, 14 days, or is it seven days? Seven days, and then we'll take bids at the November meeting. We've got plenty of time now since we can't get the bleachers in before the season anyway, which we're still in good shape at the high school. They're brand-new bleachers. It's just the fact, this is the VIP seating that will now go into high school, and then, of course, that new set of bleachers is going to move to the central office, and hopefully we'll have a dedication, a rededication to that facility here. You all will get to see the finished product on that gymnasium, and it's beautiful if you've not been in it. So my recommendation is, is that we go ahead and advertise for bids for labor, and we'll go ahead and get this basically checkbox, we'll get it checked and done. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Rhonda.
I think I have a motion. Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have our ECHS renovation phase seven. First, we have to approve updated schematic design and cost opinion.
I'm back again. So that's the high school renovation, phase seven. We have been working with KDE, John Gilbert, the plan reviewer there, had a discussion with Mr. Saylor earlier in the month, and there were some things that they wanted to see happen with the BG1, the initial BG1 that was submitted. They wanted to make sure that all of the varied funding sources were listed on the BG1, and they wanted to make sure that the project scope narrative was clarified a bit. So the BG1 that was submitted to you guys, for me, sort of has two pages, and the first page clarified the scope of the project. And I worked with John Gilbert at KDE on that to make sure that it took care of all of his concerns. In a phased project like this one, he was concerned that some of the descriptions were covering parts of the building that had been done in previous phases. And I needed to make sure in my language that I sort of indicated to him that the work that was going to happen in phase seven inside the building was not going to readdress issues that had been covered in phase six or phase five back in 2006 and 2015. The other thing that they talked to us a long time about was just making sure that we listed all of the funding sources, and there were a couple added by Mark Rollins with Baird to that left-side column on page two, which will show you how the project is going to be funded. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have about those. But the idea, I think, this evening was to make sure that you all were able to take a look at that and make sure that the language and the funding sources changes were okay to submit to KDE.
Okay, Rhonda, I think the first thing... I think the first thing is the schematic designs, and I just wanted to bring those back to you tonight. Remember, the last meeting, we had those discussions. We also talked about, in terms of the alternates, what were possible with those, and if you all had an opportunity to pull those up, you had the football stadium renovation, of course, and there ended up, there was two alternates. Let's start with baseball, softball first, because that's the order of the alternates. So with baseball, softball, we decided that we needed to make sure that we had both parking areas, the parking area for the baseball field, the parking area for the softball field. So we told the architects to make sure that was part of the base bid. There's two alternates there, one alternate, which is alternate number one, which is the back parking lot. That, again, I don't know if they're loading today or not for you guys or not, but you remember what they look like. The second alternate is new scoreboards, and we wanted to make sure that that was listed, but didn't know exactly financially where we would be at on that project, so that's a good one to pull out. And then, the parking lot that was in Center Field, there was a lot of talk about the road becoming a one-lane road. So what we did is, we went ahead, we did have a second opinion on the cost opinion on that, and we're still looking at a project that, that road would cost us somewhere over a half a million dollars, which, of course, right now, we do not have that type of funding in order to do that. But we did want to have it in the future plans where KDE likes to see, whenever you've got projects like this going on, what is your future plans for these projects and stuff? It's just like when we bought the property across the road, we had to show that one day we was going to use it for a middle school in order for them to buy it. So they like to see that, and I think it's good that it's in here, we've talked about it, but it's not actually an alternate, because there's no way we'll have that kind of funding. Then the football field, there was no really changes made down there, but there's two alternates down there. Alternate three is the parking lot, and alternate four are the lights for the tennis courts. So that was the major changes on that, or just, those are the cleanup items after our discussion. And of course, total project amount as of right now for construction and all of the soft costs and everything like that, and it's ended up just a little bit more, it's a little over $11 million. Those documents are there for you to look at, but I think we just need to reaffirm that, that is the scope of the project, where they can continue on with their work, and they've been continuing on. But let's just give a final approval tonight for the schematics.
Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thanks, Brian. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Next, we have approve a school security funds request.
On that one, as part of its House bill, I believe it was 392, I think was the correct bill, that provided $18 million of school safety funding for Kentucky school districts. And of course, the high school renovation has all of the security upgrades, the secure entrance, the doors, in terms of the changes with the doors, the locks on the doors, all those safety requirements, it's part of Senate Bill One. They provided $18 million in funding, and it was divided by school districts. Our amount is $62,454. So I am asking you all to approve this school security funding request, and it will show up on the BG1 here in a minute when we approve it. So that's $62,000 to go towards the safety upgrades on this facility.
Do we have a motion? Thanks, Sheila. Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carries. Next, we have the consideration and approval to revise the BG1.
And if you're able to get, the BG1 will open. If you're not getting other things to open, it will open on these Chromebooks. But as you can see, the total construction cost after all of the schematic design improvements that you approved at the last meeting and just approved again, total construction is $9.1 million with all the soft costs and some of the different items that's in there, of course, with the architect fee, your construction manager, all your different fees, construction contingencies. We did put $100,000 in there for equipment and furnishings, because you'll find out real quick, you'll spend that for all of your track equipment, and you don't have a mower on the football field, but you do have a sweeper that you'll have to purchase. That should be enough money to cover that. As you can see, the total cost of the project is $11,307,454. And then on the right-hand side is the available funds, and we're going to do that through our FSPK bond sale. We're also going to do a general fund bond sale, and that is to pay for the turf. That's the money you committed to this project out of the general fund, and you'll see the $62,454 show up in line item 12 for the school safety funds. So the total funds available is $11,307,000. And that is the updated BG1, and that's the one that we'll probably go to bid with. There might be some changes down the road, a little bit here and there, but that is the BG1 for this project, and I ask for an approval.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All right. It's approved. Next, we have a consideration approval of the geotechnical exploration contract.
Peter, you want to talk to them about the geotech?
Yeah, so I'm glad that this made it onto the board agenda tonight, because I have two different engineers that like to see the report, once they come out and board in different locations. Whenever we're doing a building, structural engineer like Pacheco and our site guys love to see the geotechnical exploration as well. I am, I apologize, I don't have the memo in front of me, so I may need Jeff, I may need you to help me with that one. But this is for the high school project phase seven, and we had three engineering firms that provided us proposals, and the memo was to provide you guys an outline for what you, our recommendations are for that night, and I apologize that I didn't hear about the memo.
That's okay. We had two different firms that put in a proposal. One was CSI, the other firm was SM&amp;E. CSI was a total of $30,390. SM&amp;E was $66,040, so almost double. Of course, the recommendation from Ross Tarrant is, is that we go with CSI, they're a good company, they've done work for us in the past as well.
They did it for spring break today, they were sending it back to the head as well.
So I know it's the architect's recommendation, and it's my recommendation as well that we approve that contract.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Are you second, Sheila? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carries. Next, we have our consent items.
Thank you, Peter, and we appreciate you coming down. If you'll give me that information tomorrow, we'll go ahead and try to get it in the paper next week. And that way, we'll go ahead and get it knocked out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Consent items, guys, they're pretty quick. You've got the last three board meetings, you had the tax hearing, you also had the regular called meeting, and then, of course, we had the special called meeting on the 24th, so you've got the minutes for those that you all have had an opportunity to look at. You've got your bills and treasures report, they're all posted. Mindsight Behavioral Group is another group that's helping us with some of the social-emotional situations that we're having to deal with, and hopefully, getting our kids back in school this week will help start addressing some of those issues. It's been a long seven months for our students, and it was good to see those buses roll yesterday. And so that is on there, as we need their help. They'll be working mainly in the elementary schools. Of course, we have our agreement with Mountain Comp, who is working with our high school and middle school. And of course, we have our own counselor as well. We've got the purchase of two new school buses, and we had talked a lot about whether or not we wanted to really go ahead and purchase buses. For some reason, all of a sudden, I cannot, my portal is completely locked up, I can't use it on this computer. But I did include for you all a inventory of our buses, and I hope that you all got a chance to look at that. And that's one thing that our board really needs to be proud of. When we got here five years ago, our bus fleet was in terrible, terrible shape. Anytime you've got buses out there running on routes, and they don't have a white top on them, you know that your buses are too old. And we had a bunch of them out there. And now, if you look at that inventory of those buses, you've had the opportunity to do that. It's amazing what we've been able to do in terms of new buses. I think this makes 18 that we've bought over the last six years. That is about where you need to be in terms of our placement schedule. You need to take your bus fleet, and you need to divide it by 12 to really determine how many buses you need to be buying on a yearly basis. Our bus fleet, we run about 30 buses a day, so if you divide it by 12, you either need to buy two or three buses every other year. And so we're buying two this year. And the good thing about those buses is, one of those buses, we're going to get at 50%. Because of the Volkswagen settlement where the admissions issue that they had with Volkswagen manufacturer, one of those buses is going to come in at 50% of cost. So you're basically going to buy one, get one half off, is what it amounts to. So that's really, in terms of the buses, but again, you should be proud of what you've been able to do with the bus fleet. And then, we just went up there and toured a $2.6 million facility for transportation, so transportation's in good shape for years to come. And then, we do have an update on the bank signature authorization. You're given authorization for our new principles to be added to the banking authorization forms. That is your consent items, and my recommendation is to approve those.
Do we have a motion? Thanks, Sheila. Do you have a second?
One second.
Thanks, Brian. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have public comments. We don't have anything online.
No, we did not post online, because this was an open meeting tonight, anybody could have attended. I know there's a lot of questions about probably school and how we're going to do. We've got closed session here, and as soon as we come out of closed session, we'll give some updates about school, the continuing with student attendance. We shouldn't be more than about 10 minutes in closed session, 15 at the most. So we'll be right back as soon as we get a motion and everything.
I need a motion to go to closed session. Thanks, Brian. Second. All in favor? All right. Oh, get him.
Are you serious? Does anyone listen to you talking? Was that planned?
Or just a spur of the?
Kind of spur of the.
God, do you love it? I can't much blame you, just from what little I've seen. I could only imagine what he's going through.
He just said, "It's not good," he said.
This is hard.
Jeremy, you ready?
Yes, sir. That's the way I think you're with it.
Only if the camera was on. I'm being ugly.
Call us back to order.
All right, call this meeting back to order.
Okay, I just want to let everybody know, we've talked a little bit about school and scheduling of school. There's no action coming out of closed session, but just more or less a statement to our community. I know there's a lot of discussion about when you're supposed to look at the metric in terms of determining school for the following week. As a board, we've decided that because we live in such a small community and you know, we don't have the same situation that larger school districts have, that we feel like we can wait a little bit longer to look at the metric. So we're probably always going to look Friday and Saturday and sort of look at what the trends are, what the cases are, and we're going to make the best decision that we can for our school, our schools, our staff, and of course, our students. And of course, if you were able to be in our schools yesterday, is our first day of school in seven months. So I think it's important that we try to take that into consideration as well because the mental health of our students, the mental health of our families that are having to struggle sometimes with the remote learning is a big issue out there. So there was a lot of happy faces the last two days and then this Thursday, Group B will get to attend on Thursday and Friday. There's going to be another 700, 800 happy faces on Thursday because they get to go to their first day of school in seven months as well. So I just want the public to know, we're always going to try to, we'll always be proactive. We'll not sit here and be reactive. We'll look at our numbers, we, we know what the math is, we know pretty much ahead of time what our numbers are going to be. I want, I want to let our health department know and by no means are we thumbing our nose at their recommendations. We appreciate their help, they've been a great partner and they continue to be a great partner for us. And I think that, you know, they, they have to abide by the recommendations that they're given from, from the Kentucky Department of Public Health. But again, remember the Thursday deadline is a recommendation. If a school district wants to look on Friday, we can look on Friday. And I think that's what we've decided as a, as a board and as, as your superintendent that we'll look on Friday. Sometimes it may be Saturday, but we'll always make a decision before Saturday evening where our parents have all day on Sunday to be able to make those contingency plans if we have to call school off. But we know that our number one priority right now is for our kids to be in school every day. One last thing is, is that we will continue to follow the metric that we've given everybody that's on the website in terms of athletic events and in terms of playing athletic events, for instance, and you can read that document, it's on our website under our COVID resources. As a matter of fact, I think it's its own link right now that you can look at. Our football game for this week is very much in jeopardy right now and if we're playing a red county, our, our teams will not travel out of district to play in a red county and neither can a red county come here and play. So we're looking at options for a football game on Friday night. That is an agreement that we worked out with the health department in conjunction with them. So we do value them, we value their opinion, we value their hard work. So we want to continue to do that and we'll continue to follow that metric until such a time that all of us feel like in terms of an agreement that we can live with. So that's just information for our public concerning when we have school, when we don't have school, when we cancel athletic events or we go ahead and play. I don't know if the board has anything else to add. Okay.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the superintendent's report.
Just real quick, I'd have made, of course, you have personnel action. You just had a back to school update and we did not have to have board action on that coming out of closed session. The athletic update, again, I just gave you that update as well. The NFHS update, our camera will be installed November 4th. I know we were on NFHS Network the other night with our game in Taylor County. I know there was some issues and what's happening is that when these cameras are going into these new stadiums for the first time, they are having some broadcast issues. But what we're going to be doing is that you can use that camera during practice as well. So we'll be working with the NFHS Network and Jeremy will be working close with their techs to make sure that our video is up and running and is of good quality once we get into basketball season so that we can live stream our games. As of right now, I know probably nobody wants to hear this, but probably starting in the basketball season, we will start out that it will probably be parents only to begin with and it will be that way for both, both groups of fans, home and the visiting team. And there's three segments in basketball season, of course, this is KHSAA guidance that the basketball season is divided in those three segments and we'll try to follow that as closely as we can. We will probably not see a game this season where that gym will be jam packed with 2,000 people in it. It's just probably not going to happen. It's just COVID, that's why we wanted to make sure we got the system updated so that every game will be broadcast, not just the two or three games that are usually the big games. People will be able to see every game. We'll be getting some information out there on subscription prices in terms of whether or not you want to purchase a monthly pass or you want to purchase a yearly pass and we'll, we'll work over the next year to develop all that stuff, but we'll get information out there to everybody. And then finally, the KD school report card, I did ask Charlotte to be with you. She's going to take just a few minutes to talk about the school report card, you have the link there. So Charlotte, if you don't mind.
The biggest change to the school report card this year, when you look at it, you're going to notice that there is no assessment data. That's due to the fact that we didn't have our state testing, K-Prep, in the spring due to COVID because our schools were closed. So that's the biggest thing that you're going to see. The rest of the school report card for this year is a snapshot of some good things that are happening. One of the things that I pulled out when I was looking at it, 69 out of 79 students completed advanced coursework, which for us would be our dual college credit. So that equals about 87.3%, which is a fantastic number. That's awesome for those students. You will also see our career and technology education program. Those numbers are, are very impressive and look very good. You also have our gifted and talented program, those numbers are there. You have school safety information, you have student demographic, and you also have information about equity and access that we have within our schools and teacher information as well. So again, this is just a snapshot, looks a little bit different than it has in the past because we don't have our assessment data on here, but there are some good things to look at that our district is doing. And if you do have any questions, you need me to walk you through anything, be more than happy to do that for you.
Graduation data looked really good.
Graduation data did look really good. That's another piece that's on here as well.
And again, Charlotte won't mind if you all get to looking at that, the document on KSBA, when you pull it up, it's got a link. You can click on that link. It didn't open for you?
I got that same error you got.
Okay. Well, when you get home and you're able to pull it up on your home computer, you can pull it up and you can click on that link and you'll be able to go to the school report card. A lot of good information on that. I know she mentioned equity. I just wanted to let you all know right now, on December 8th, Dr. Roger Cleveland, who works at EKU, I've known Roger for a lot of years. He's a Middlesbrough High School graduate. He's a fine gentleman and he is going to lead us in our equity and diversity training. As you know, back in the fall, of course, with the George Floyd, Brianna Taylor and all the things that's happened with equity and diversity, KDE has now decided that, that they have a pro, a program that they're wanting to adhere to in terms of equity and diversity training. Dr. Cleveland has agreed to come. Like I said, I've known him for a long time. He has a heck of a story, growing up in Middlesbrough, Kentucky and, and to be now a professor at EKU, it is an absolute wonderful story. On December 8th at 5:30, we're actually going to meet here in the auditorium. We can actually have two board members that can attend that. You all need to just talk about who might want to attend. If all of you all wanted to attend, I guess we could have a special called meeting and allow all of you to attend if you want to attend that training. Rhonda, I will leave that up to you to just find out either two of you or if everybody wants to come or more than two of you want to come. It's about a two hour training, we're just going to have a conversation about equity, about diversity and how we can, and what we can do in our school system to better prepare our students for the real world once they leave Estill County. Because when they go to a larger city or go to, you know, to a Louisville, Exeter, they're going to be faced with a lot of diversity issues that maybe they've never been faced with before. And I know that was the case for me, growing up and going to high school in a high school just like Estill County High School, predominantly white. And then to go to college and attend college in a, at a university that had 25% of the population, which was black. It's a little bit of cultural shock. Sometimes we don't understand exactly what, how to react or what, what are, what our reactions should be. So we want to start having that conversation. It's part of all the growth plans of the administrators in the school district. So that's on December 8th. So you just let me know exactly how you want to do that. You will be very impressed with Dr. Cleveland. I mean, he is an absolute jewel and I'm glad he's decided to do this for us. Other than that, that is it for the superintendent's report, so.
Next, we have a board member forum. From the board.
Well, look at me.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Y'all don't want to adjourn?
She gave you the motion. I'll stick it.
All in favor?
I'm going to go to her.
We are adjourned.
Thanks.
Thank y'all for coming.